Thank you, and good morning. Good morning, everyone. We're gonna get started now. I understand that the state law currently requires that the following announcement be made at the beginning of every remote council session. Due to the current public health emergency, City Council is currently meeting remotely. We are using Microsoft Teams to make this remote meeting possible. Instructions for how the public may view the meeting and offer public comment are included in the stated meeting notice that was published in the Daily News, Inquirer, The Legal Intelligencer, prior to the meeting, and can also be found on PHLCouncil.com. I now note that the hour has come. The clerk will please call roll to take attendance, and members that are in attendance will please indicate that they are present when your name is called to ensure that your image is displayed on the screen. Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Please call the roll. Mr. Decker, you can just call the roll. Call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Good morning, I am present. Good morning, Mr. President and council colleagues in Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Good morning, everyone, I am present.
Councilwoman Dobbs?
Morning, Council President, colleagues, and people.
Councilwoman Gaultier?
Good morning, Council President, good morning colleagues, good morning to the public, present.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Good morning, Council President, good morning colleagues, and good morning, Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Councilman Green?
Good morning, Council President, good morning, members of council, and good morning to the city of brotherly love and in women's history month, sisterly effectiveness.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Kim?
Good morning, Council President, good morning colleagues, and good morning, Philadelphia, I am present.
Good morning.
Councilman Heenan?
Good morning, Council President, and good morning colleagues.
Good morning.
Councilman Johnson?
Good morning, Council President, good morning colleagues. I'm calling for justice for all of our youth who have lost their lives to senseless gun violence.
Good morning.
Councilman Jones?
Good morning, Mr. President, good morning colleagues, good morning, Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Councilman O?
Good morning, Council President, good morning colleagues.
Good morning.
Councilman O'Neal?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Parker?
Good morning, Mr. President, good morning colleagues in Philadelphia. And, Mr. President, having some technical difficulties, I can't turn on my screen or else I'll lose my sound, so I'm gonna keep the sound on. Thank you all.
You need your sound, Councilwoman, good morning.
Councilwoman Kendra Sanchez?
Good morning colleagues, good morning colleagues, I think today is the day with that internet connection for us all, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, good morning, Councilwoman.
Councilman Scola?
Good morning, Council President, good morning colleagues, present.
Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman Thomas?
Good morning, Council President, good morning colleagues, good morning to the listening public.
Good morning, Councilman.
Council President Clark?
Good morning to all, we have established a quorum, so we're now gonna come to order. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair will recognize Archbishop Mary Floyd Palmer of Heavenly Hall Church. She is here today as a guest of Councilwoman Gaultier. I would ask all members and guests to please bow your heads for the invocation.
Good morning, President Clark, and Jody Leader Parker, Minade Leader O'Neal, fellow council members, and in particular, Councilwoman Gaultier for this invitation. Let us pray. Oh God, our help in ages past, our hope for years to come, a shelter from the stormy blast, and our eternal home. Heavenly Father, we are so grateful that your finger of love touched us this morning to awaken us and get the activity of not just our spirits, but our minds, our hearts, and our bodies. There are many concerns that are before us, COVID-19, violence of guns and others, hunger, unemployment, sickness, despair, loss of hope, lack of care, concern, compassion, and yes, Lord, even death. So with all of these things in mind, we ask that you will touch each council member, you will strengthen their bodies, that they will be able to make sound decisions, that you will strengthen their minds, that they will have clarity of thought and speech, that you will strengthen their spirits, that they will be able, in their decisions, to promote healing and wholeness. Holy Spirit be our invited guests in all that we discuss today, in conducting the business of these thy people in the city that we love so much, so that, Lord, trust will never be abused, integrity will never be compromised, and the wisdom that only comes from you will forever be endowed to these our servants, your servants, in their continued care for all people in this city of brotherly love and sisterly affection. This is my humble prayer, your servant, we ask in the name that is above every name, Jesus Christ, we do pray. Amen, amen, and amen. God bless you.
Amen. Thank you so much, we really appreciate you being here today, get those inspiring words, thank you so much. And our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March 4, 2021, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Scola.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March 4, 2021, be approved.
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved and properly seconded, that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March 4, 2021, stand approved, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it, and that journal is approved, and our next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President, on behalf of the members of council, there are no requests for leaves of absence today.
Chair thanks to Councilwoman, and our next order of business is communications, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Decker to please read the messages from the mayor and any other communication that he may have in his possession.
From the mayor to the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, pursuant to Sections 4604 and 2307 of the Homeward Charter, I am today transmitting to the Council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills, bill numbers 210002, 210075, 210076, 210078, and 210081. And I am pleased to advise you that on March 10, 2021, I signed the following bill which was passed by council at its session on February 25, 2021, bill number 200617. And that on March 10, 2021, I signed the following bills which were passed by council at its session on March 4, 2021, bill numbers 210073, 210077, 210080, 210120, and 210121. And I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body, a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1331 North H Street located in the 5th Council Manic District in accordance with terms of Chapter 16, 700 of the Philadelphia Code, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Thank you. And our next order of business is introduction of bills and resolutions, and just by way of a reminder, we are asking that all resolutions, including previous resolutions, be placed on the final passes calendar for a next session of council unless they are being referred to committee. In our current remote environment, this procedure will provide an appropriate opportunity for public comment, so I would thank you very much in advance for your anticipated cooperation. Mr. Decker, would you please read the titles of the legislation that is being offered today by the members?
Councilwoman Parker offers one bill and one resolution. On behalf of Council President Clark, Councilwoman Parker offers an ordinance authorizing and approving the execution and delivery of one or more service agreements between the City of Philadelphia and the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority and/or one or more other city-related authorities related to the financing of a neighborhood preservation initiative which includes housing, commercial corridors, and neighborhood infrastructure programs.
Thank you, that will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And on her own behalf, Councilwoman Parker offers resolution.
Mr. Decker, hold on a second, before we move on to the next resolution, let me recognize Councilwoman Kim.
Yes, thank you so much, Council President, I have to leave this meeting for official council business and would like to request a leave for the rest of the meeting, but would like to be recorded as voting aye on all bills and resolutions.
Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman, leave shall be granted, and you shall be recorded as voting aye on all bills and resolutions.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Decker, please continue.
On her own behalf, Councilwoman Parker offers a resolution authorizing the Committee on Housing, Neighborhood Development, and the Homeless to hold hearings examining the race gap in home appraisals and its impact on homeownership and wealth accumulation in Philadelphia.
This week's calendar?
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers four resolutions. On behalf of Council President Clark, Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1331 North H Street located in the 5th Council Manic District.
Next week's calendar?
And, on her own behalf, Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers a resolution supporting a City of Philadelphia Lights Out Campaign and recognizing and honoring the Bird Safe Philly Coalition, the Building Industry Association of Philadelphia, and the Building Owners and Managers Association Philadelphia in their collaborative effort to protect the migratory bird population.
Next week's calendar?
And a resolution urging U.S. Senators Casey and Toomey and the U.S. Senate to pass House Resolution 1, Senate Resolution 1 for the People Act.
Next week's calendar?
And a resolution recognizing and supporting working women and mothers impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic in honor of Women's History Month and calling for a robust federal response to our nation's first she session.
Next week's calendar?
Council President?
Yes. Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Thank you, I just wanted to be clear for the record that the Bird Safe Resolution was co-introduced by my colleague Councilmember Kenyatta Johnson, and the For the People Resolution was co-introduced by my colleague Councilmember Maria Kenona Sanchez. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman, record shall reflect that. Mr. Decker?
Councilman Heenan offers one bill entitled An Ordnance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Cotman Avenue, Milner Street, Princeton Avenue, and the Delaware River.
For the committee?
Councilman Jones offers one bill entitled An Ordnance Amending Chapter 9 of Subcode PM, the Philadelphia Property Maintenance Code of Title 4 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Additional Special Requirements to Establish a Program in Which the City May Perform Certain Urgent Repairs and Bill the Property Owner.
For the committee?
Councilman Johnson offers two resolutions, entitled a resolution honoring Amanda Gorman, the first national youth poet laureate for becoming the youngest poet to ever speak at a U.S. Presidential inauguration.
Councilman Johnson, you wanted to speak before this, on the next resolution?
Yes, yes, sir, well, thank you, Council President, I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the purpose of this resolution, just honoring the great work of this young lady Amanda Gorman, who was the first national poet laureate, but also the youngest inaugural poet who spoke at our President, President Biden's inauguration with her poem "The Hill We Climb" calling on for unity and healing of the United States. Most recently, she was racially profiled in a building in which she lived by a security guard, and so, you know, this resolution is really sending good vibes of encouragement, support, and empowerment. She talked about how one day she was an icon, but another day banged racially profiled, and that's what we deal with every day here in America, particularly as Black people, regardless of our status and/or position, and so, this resolution is in honor and supporting her great efforts and encourages this young lady to keep on keeping on doing this Women's History Month. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman, that will be on next week's calendar.
Councilman Johnson offers a resolution honoring the life and legacy of Philadelphia's own Smokin' Joe Frazier on the 50th anniversary of his heavyweight championship win over Muhammad Ali in the fight of the century.
Councilman, did you want to be recognized before this also?
Absolutely, Council President, we knew he hails from North Philadelphia, the 5th Council Manic District, but when we talk about the boxing culture here in the city of Philadelphia, you know, I take a nod to my colleague Councilman Curtis Jones who's always on the front line promoting boxing tournaments and encouraging young people to put down the guns and pick up the gloves, and we think about the rich boxing culture and history that we have here in the city of Philadelphia, you know, all this weekend we have had an opportunity to celebrate, which we all know as the fight of the century. Philadelphia has a shining king of boxing, which is our former heavyweight champion, Smokin' Joe Frazier, who put Muhammad Ali down in the 15th round with a mighty left hook, also giving him his first defeat, and so, it is a great pleasure and honor to introduce this resolution because, as Philadelphians, that's, and that was a particular moment in the history that I look back on, that I'm proud of, that put our city on the map, we should always continue to celebrate those who are representing the city of Philadelphia in the best and brightest way, and so, I enthusiastically introduced this resolution in honor, honoring the life and legacy of Philadelphia's great heavyweight champion, Smokin' Joe Frazier, honoring his victory over Muhammad Ali during the fight of the century. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman, and if anyone is passing 13th in Allegheny, you can see an awesome mural that just unveiled yesterday by a local artist, and it is really, really, really special. Thank you, Councilman, that will be on next week's calendar.
Councilman Green offers one bill and one resolution, entitled An Ordnance Providing for the Submission of the Qualified Electors of the City of Philadelphia of an Amendment to Article 8, Chapter 5 of the Philadelphia Homeward Charter entitled Referenda Approved by Voters, by adding a new section providing that the citizens of Philadelphia call upon the Pennsylvania General Assembly and the governor to pass legislation that will decriminalize, regulate, and tax the use and sale to adults aged 21 years or older of cannabis for non-medical purposes.
Okay, that will be referred to committee?
And a resolution submitting to the electors of the City of Philadelphia of an Amendment to Article 8, Chapter 5 of the Philadelphia Homeward Charter entitled Referenda Approved by the voters, by adding a new section providing that the citizens of Philadelphia call upon the Pennsylvania General Assembly and the governor to pass legislation that will decriminalize, regulate, and tax the use and sale to adults aged 21 years or older of cannabis for non-medical purposes.
Thank you, also refer to committee, hold on a second, Mr. Decker, Councilman Heenan, did you want to be recognized now?
Thank you, Council President, it was on the previous introduction of the, you know, that Councilman Johnson had introduced a resolution recognizing the legacy of our rich boxing history with Joe Frazier and the Frazier family. I, you know, I just wanted to, you know, point a personal privilege that, you know, a lot of people, I mean, look at 50 years ago, and we're still talking about, you know, how proud we are of the city of firsts, and proud of our family and our roots, and our and our ability to really gather around each other for public safety, education, and having these stars and starlight power given back to the community, you know, to the whole entire, you know, Frazier family, but they also brought people up with them, all right, they also brought people up in the neighborhoods, they educated them, they connected of the job, they did job trainings, they, you know, were helping with, again, with our public safety, trying to, you know, put people, make sure that people who, you know, fell in hard times be shown the right path, they also had, you know, good supplier network and folks in promotion, I know Johan Jr. or Johan Promotions was Cloverly then, at the time, was the promoter, they're also celebrating 50 years, so I want to congratulate them in their tenure and looking at their Philadelphians in many, many ways that still continue today, you know, with their legacy, so it's more than a fight, it's more than a family, all right, it's all of the city together rallying around one of its own as we do, all right, we take care of each other, we don't let anybody pick on us, all right, we're very protective of each other and what we do, so I just want to, you know, thank Councilman Johnson for recognizing the 50-year anniversary, but it's much deeper than that, and, you know, I'm proud to be a part of it, just like everybody has been for the last 50 years.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman. Mr. Decker, please continue.
Councilwoman Brooks offers one resolution, entitled a resolution commemorating the life and legacy of community activist Shawn W. Wilson, whose tireless advocacy against gun violence and racial injustice advanced community safety and expanded a powerful model of neighborhood engagement for former first responders and veterans in the city of Philadelphia.
That will be on next week's calendar.
Excuse me, Council President?
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones, I'm sorry, Johnson?
Yeah, can I have a small point of privilege, just acknowledging my colleague Kendra Brooks as she introduced a resolution honoring a young man named Shawn Wilson who had an organization called Vets in the Hood, and he'd been down in City Council on several different occasions, advocating and fighting for resources for our most prized individuals who have served our country, which are our veterans, and so, I just want to commend her and also Councilman Katherine Gilmore Richardson, just making sure that we acknowledge individuals who are really on the ground during the work, and, Council President, we know, as the leader of this body, it was your hard work and your efforts to create the Office of Veterans Affairs, and also the Veterans Parade, and also the Veterans Ceremony where we award them every year, and so, in that spirit, I just wanted to take a moment, just to acknowledge his life and his legacy, and he had a word that said "love on purpose," particularly around this issue of gun violence that we're seeing here in the city of Philadelphia, and he had a spirit of just reaching out to young people and helping them change their lives and really talking about really what it is to love on purpose, and so, I just want to acknowledge that, for the record, and my heart and prayers goes out to his family and also the Nice Town community as well.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman. Mr. Decker, please proceed.
Councilman Thomas offers two resolutions, entitled a resolution honoring and congratulating the Father Judge High School Wrestling Team for their second consecutive win of the Philadelphia Catholic League Wrestling Championship in their 2019-2020 season.
That will be on next week's calendar.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Education to hold hearings to identify and examine potential systemic biases in oversight that create inequalities between Black and white-led schools resulting in fewer resources or support for Black-founded and led institutions.
Day's calendar?
Council President, can I be recognized on?
Certainly, Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President, I appreciate it, I just want to take a moment to, first of all, thank my colleague Councilmember Bobby Heenan for co-introducing the legislation with me as far as recognizing Judge as the champion of the week, and I also want to take a moment to thank all of my colleagues who co-sponsored my resolution around looking at Black institutions, Black-led institutions, specifically give a shout-out to my colleague Councilmember Jones, who had six Black-led institutions in his district alone, and he is one of the co-sponsors of this legislation. I've been in some interesting meetings as a member of the Education Committee, and I've been a part of a lot of dialogue as it relates to how Black institutions specifically are treated, and what I don't want to happen is for this conversation to be hijacked and it turn into a conversation around charter schools. This is not about charter schools at all, this is about Black-led institutions and how Black institutions are treated significantly different than their white counterparts. For me personally, again, I've been a part of some dialogues, and I've heard some things that I feel like are really troubling, and I think that our best steps moving forward, because I think that there's some perception issues around Black institutions, Black educators, Black children, and Black families. I think that the most important thing for us moving forward is to move this conversation to a public forum, so we can assure that the dialogue is one that's transparent, is informative, is factual, and it's one that's looked at through a lens of equity as well as justice. I believe in African-centered education, I come from a space of African-centered pedagogy. I'm very familiar with a lot of different initiatives that take place when you're dealing with African-centered pedagogy. Sometimes we start our day with Harambe, which is a Kiswahili term that means "let's pull together." Young people, they even count using different languages and terms, I listen to my son in Harambe, and when they're ready to start, they don't say "one, two, three," they say "moja" in Bili, "tatu," and that's teaching the young people numbers in a totally different language. I asked my son this morning, "Son, what is your principle of the month?" And he has a different principle of the month that's based on the principles of Kwanzaa, and so, when you're talking about Ujima and all the other principles, my son is learning those things at an early stage. When I get the opportunity to ask him about historical illusions, his perception of great Black folks is not just limited to Martin Luther King or Malcolm X, and he's in third grade, I had an opportunity to listen to him recite a speech by Langston Hughes that he actually memorized, and in his speech, right, my three, my third-grade, eight-year-old son was able to articulate in his speech the difference between when you are a person of color and when you are a person of color of being forced to go in the kitchen and eat when there's company. So in the spirit of Langston Hughes and in the spirit of my son, I do not want our Black institutions to have to go in the kitchen anymore. I want them to be able to have the same access to resources, the same treatment, and the same privileges as their white counterparts, and so, in the spirit of Black equity, right, and only in the spirit of Black equity, I emphatically introduce this resolution today. Thank you, Council President, thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Councilman, that will be on today's calendar.
Councilman Heenan, Councilman O'Neal offers one bill, entitled An Ordnance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Cotman Avenue, the Montgomery County Line, the Bucks County Line, Interstate 95, Grant Avenue, and Roosevelt Boulevard.
For the committee?
Councilwoman Bass offers two resolutions, entitled a resolution recognizing March 2021 as Brain Injury Awareness Month, to increase understanding of chronic brain injury, reduce stigma, showcase the diversity of injury across demographics, and improve care and support.
Next week's calendar?
And a resolution recognizing March 2021 as National Nutrition Month, to educate Philadelphians on how to make informed food choices and develop healthy eating and physical activity habits while raising awareness of the need for accessible nutritious food.
Next week's calendar?
There are no other bills or resolutions being offered by the members, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker, that concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions for today, and our next order of business is reports from committee, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson for a report from the Committee on Rules.
Thank you, Council President, the Committee on Rules reports out three bills with the favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, will you please read that report?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Rules to which is referred Bill Number 200628, entitled An Ordnance Amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning, by revising and clarifying certain provisions and making technical changes, and Bill Number 210075, entitled An Ordnance Amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning, by revising and clarifying certain provisions and making technical changes, and Bill Number 210078, entitled An Ordnance Amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning, by revising and clarifying certain provisions and making technical changes. Respectfully reports, it is considered and amended the same, and returns the principles to Council with favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President, I'm looking at the rules of council. Thank you, Council President. I'm looking at the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading of this day of Bills Number 200628, 210075, and 210078.
Second.
Thank you. This is the move and properly second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 200628, 210075, and 210078. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Sanchez for a report from the Committee on Appropriations.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Appropriations reports out one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee on Appropriations to which is referred Bill Number 210160, entitled an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2021 from the general fund, the council, to the general fund, the managing director. Respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules council be suspended as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 210160.
Second.
Thank you. This is the move and properly second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 210160. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it. And a bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. That concludes our reports from committee. And our next order of business is consideration of the calendar. I note that those bills just reported from committee with suspending up the rules have been deemed to have had a first reading, and these bills will be placed on our second reading and final passage calendar at our next session of council. If there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker. We're calling up the purpose of calling up resolutions and bills on a second reading and final passage calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. They are Numbers 210183, 210184, 210185, 210186, 210187, 210188, 210189, 210190, 210192, 210194, 210196, 210200, 200618, and 210122. All other bills and resolutions are being held, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Before we proceed with our calendar, we'll have our public comment session. So we're going to take a few minutes, five to 10 minutes recess to give our technology professionals some time to connect with the speakers for today. So we'll take a brief moment, brief recess. Thank you. Now we're going to get started. Now that everyone is connected to the meeting and before considering the resolution and bills we have before us today, we will consider the public comment and we'll go as follows. Public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passes calendars for possible action at assessment of counseling. A speaker on any of these matters must sign up in order to testify. You must call 215-686-3406 by 3:00 p.m. the day before the session to sign up for public comment. When you call, we will take your name, phone number, the number of the legislative item you are commenting on, and whether you are in support of or against the legislation, and add you to the list. We will telephone each person on the list during a council session and invite them to our remote meeting. Now, under ideal circumstances, they will each have three minutes, but today, given the volume, we want to ask you to limit your testimony to two minutes. Thank you. In order to be fair, to all those wishing to speak, I intend to hopefully to the established time limit. So once invited to and asked to begin your testimony, a timer will be started, and we will monitor your remaining time throughout your testimony. When there are thirty seconds, we... This is a public meeting, so because the meeting is public, participants and viewers have no reasonable expectation of privacy. And by continuing to be in the meeting, you are consenting to being recorded. We're now going to get started, and I would ask the chief clerk to please read the name of our first speaker on the list.
Laura Arbblaster, commenting on 210187.
Thank you so much, City Council. It truly means so much to not only me, but our entire team and our families to be recognized in Resolution 210187. We began the work in 2016 because we saw wrong, or rather, an injustice, and to the best of our abilities tried to right it. I can only speak for myself, but perhaps the ladies on my team feel the same. We thought we would gather people together to lift their spirits, to say we see you and we hear you. That said, I did not dream we would be leaders of a movement that has helped change the trajectory of our country. By showing my support of Resolution 210187, I'm showing my daughter and the next generation of women that their voice matters and that they matter. Thank you so much for your time.
Just for the record, again, say your name briefly.
Laura Arbblaster.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Beth Finn, commenting on 210187.
Did you say Beth Finn?
Yeah, Beth Finn.
Hi, good morning.
Proceed with your testimony, please.
Yes. My name is Beth Finn. Resolution sponsor, Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson, members of Philadelphia City Council. Thank you for considering this important resolution about the Women's March on Philadelphia during Women's History Month. My name is Beth Finn, and I am one of the co-founders of the Women's March on Philadelphia and the president of the Pennsylvania Chapter of the National Organization for Women. I live in the Society Hill section of Philadelphia. When we started planning the first Women's March on Philadelphia in late 2016, we did not have any idea what the event would become here at home, around the country, and around the world. We would have considered the event a success if a few hundred people had shown up on the Ben Franklin Parkway to march in solidarity with us and our allies in Washington, D.C. We were truly fortunate that our partners in the City's Department of Parks and Rec and Office of Special Events knew better what to expect. Bob Allen, Doug Robinson, Giselle Jones, and all of their colleagues across countless departments were instrumental in making sure that each of the four Women's Marches on Philadelphia were peaceful, safe, and successful. Without their expertise, the 60,000 marchers would not have been able to gather, exercise their First Amendment right of peaceful protest, and strengthen each other for the hard work we knew was ahead of us following the 2016 presidential election. Though the challenges facing women did not start with that election, and they haven't been magically solved by our most current president, the 2016 election served as a catalyst for many Americans to start to claim their voices as citizens. This is the most powerful promise of our democracy. The first Women's March was an opportunity for ordinary people to jumpstart their activism. It led to people demanding their rights guaranteed in our Constitution, to constituents expecting more from their elected officials, and to record numbers of women, people of color, LGBTQ people, and underrepresented groups running for office. I am so proud of the work my sisters, sisters, and I have done to organize these four years of women marches. I am proud of the platform we were able to create to amplify these voices, and I am proud of the incredible work that tens of thousands of people took on to make our city, our country, and our world a better place. There is still so much more work to do to guarantee that women are paid equitably for the work that we do, that women have autonomy over our own health and bodies, that the burden of maintaining a household and caring for our children doesn't fall solely on our shoulders, that violence against women, especially domestic violence, is taken as seriously as other kinds of violence, and that women are represented equally in all places where decisions are being made. The passage of this resolution by this council shows the commitment of the city of Philadelphia to these ideals. Thank you for your support and for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Nikki Bagby, commenting on 210187.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, just state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Good morning. My name is Nikki Bagby. Good morning. I'm in agreement to Resolution 210... Good morning. I'm in agreement to Resolution 210187, and I wanted to thank, of course, for introducing Councilwoman Richardson along with Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Canones Sanchez, Councilwoman Gumm, Councilmember Gutierrez, Councilwoman Brooks, Councilman Hanan, as well as Quiller, Councilman Green, Councilman Johnson, and Councilman Dom. I just wanted to thank everyone again. I add on to all the comments that both my fellow organizers, as a Black woman, one of two Black women, well, three Black women who helped to put on the march, we found that there was even a lot of opposition within our own community with being a part of this march. But I'm so glad that there was a sisterhood built out of it. I was so glad that we had a platform that we were not able to talk together in unity about all of us being a woman, but so many minority communities were also represented during this time. I am so honored that we were not only a part of this Women's March, but we were a part of a continued movement that created such an impact across the world. I want to thank everyone who participated, including our mayor and several of our councilwomen who were on the line. I want to thank all of the men who were our partnerships and friends along with this march. And I just want to thank the council for recognizing we had one of the largest consistent marches, and there were not only the 65,000 that started that day, but there were hundreds of thousands of people that came through the snow, through the rain, through the cold, just to put forth a movement that will be written into legacy for the rest of our lives. And I am so honored today that Philadelphia has not only acknowledged it, but it will also be in the records for the rest of our lives that our generations down the line can also open to read as they follow this bill. So, I want to thank you again. I want to thank the members of council, and I am so blessed to witness this movement and that our movement had such impact that we saw change. Thank you again.
Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Teresa White, commenting on 210200.
Good morning. To the distinguished and honorable members of the City Council of Philadelphia, to Council President Clark, I would like to thank Councilwoman Bass for the opportunity to show my support for and speak on behalf of Resolution 210200, which recognizes March 8th as International Women's Day in an event to raise awareness of the adverse oppression and inequities that women have experienced and continue to experience globally, and to celebrate the achievements of women around the world and to campaign for positive change. I am the Director of Education and Training and Outreach Services for War Philadelphia Center Against Sexual Violence. For the past 21 years, I have dedicated my life to educating individuals and families how to prevent harm to children, youth, the elderly, people with disabilities, and women. War, the Philadelphia Center Against Sexual Violence, formerly known as Women Organized Against Rape, was founded by women to support victims of rape and other forms of sexual violence at a time when victims of sexual violence were not treated with care, respect, or dignity, and when offenders often walked away from the harm which they inflicted upon women and children. What we now know as sexual violence is an issue as it is a societal plague and is often is used as a weapon of war. We know that sexual violence knows no gender or orientation. It doesn't care about religion, race, or socioeconomic level. War was the first rape crisis center in Pennsylvania, and as a result of the leadership of women in the city of Philadelphia, there are now fifty centers in Pennsylvania, one in every county, that provides treatment for victims of sexual violence and promotes prevention education. City council support for Resolution 210200 will be an acknowledgement of the vital work conducted by women in Philadelphia and around the world, and the importance of leadership of women. And the support for this resolution will continue to show council support and efforts to eliminate adverse oppression and inequities faced by women both in our city and around the world. Thank you, council, for this opportunity to address you today.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Appreciate it.
Tamara Staley, commenting on 210190. Tamara Staley.
Greetings. As President and CEO of the Philadelphia Juneteenth Family Incorporated, I want to thank you, Councilman Johnson, and your cool sponsors for supporting the National Juneteenth Day of Observance Bill and encourage all of you to send letters to our Congress representatives supporting, asking for their support. The Philadelphia Juneteenth Family was founded in 2018. Our core foundation was built on four pillars: spiritual, cultural, education, and political. Each of these pillars represent areas that impact African-American communities. Our goal is to research, plan, and organize initiatives that will improve challenges that we face today. We are dedicated to raising cultural awareness, cross-cultural exchange, and interest in the African diaspora's agenda. We work tirelessly to help the Juneteenth become the forty-six state-recognized holiday along with others across the city and state, resulting in a delegation going to Harrisburg to witness the signing by Governor Wilson. We are thankful that Mayor Kenny has made Juneteenth holiday recognize until 2023 by executive order. I leave you with this: A lot more work needs to be done, so join the family. Thank you for the opportunity to address council, and I hope we can continue counting on you all's support as we move forward. Thank you.
Ms. Staley, just state your name for the record, please.
Tamara Staley.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Kofi Asante, commenting on 210190.
Good morning. Good morning.
State your name for the record for this testimony. Thank you.
Kofi Asante. I want to thank Councilman Johnson and City Council President and City Council for the opportunity to speak this morning. I wanted to say thank you specifically to Councilman Johnson for his courage and his moving the resolution forward to shine light on Juneteenth. Our community needs heroes that they can touch. And Johnson responded to the urgency from our city council, from our Juneteenth president, Tamara Staley. She called him out of urgency because Juneteenth was not on the calendar for the city. And he leaped into action like a superhero, like a hero we could touch. And he contacted his constituencies and other city council people, and lo and behold, the Juneteenth was back on the calendar, and we thank him for that. We thank him for his courage to be able to put the resolution to move forward our struggle as it relates to Juneteenth, and also to be able to join us in our movement in order to make Juneteenth a celebration in every household, that it becomes a stable name. When our community say "Juneteenth," they understand the struggles and sacrifices of those who came before us. And as we move forward even into this year, with the pandemic, all the things that are happening to us, it is joyful to be able to know that Juneteenth is thriving and the programs and process that we are going to do as a Juneteenth family. So, all of you heroes and sheros that are on City Council, please continue to join us and support the Philadelphia Juneteenth Family and the movement of the holiday, Juneteenth, on June the nineteenth, even in 2021. God bless, and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you for your testimony. The next speaker is Mark Harrell, commenting on 210190.
Good morning. Good morning, Council President Clark and members of City Council. My name is Mark Harrell. On behalf of the Board of the Philadelphia Juneteenth Family, I want to thank Councilman Kenyatta Johnson as well and his colleagues on City Council for introducing a resolution on Thursday, March 4th, urging the US Congress to designate Juneteenth a national holiday. The Philadelphia Juneteenth Family is supporting our national mother of Juneteenth, Miss Opal Lee from Fort Worth, Texas, currently ninety-four years old, who started a walking campaign to Washington, DC in 2016, and has continued to bring awareness to the fact that there is support for it all across the nation. There is currently legislation in the US Senate, Senate Bill 4019, and in the House, House Resolution 7232, the Juneteenth National Independence Day Act that just needs to be passed into law. We want Juneteenth to be recognized as a national holiday. Yes, Juneteenth originated in Texas, but forty-seven states now have had it as a day of observance to commemorate the ending of slavery, and more are making it a paid day off, including states like Virginia, New York, and Texas. We believe Juneteenth can be a unifier because it recognizes that slaves didn't free themselves and that they had help, from Quakers along the Underground Railroad, abolitionists both black and white like Frederick Douglass and William Lloyd Garrison, soldiers and many others who gave their lives for the freedom of the enslaved. It's not lost on us that the summer of 2020 saw the largest support of Juneteenth to be a national holiday because of the death of George Floyd highlighted the systemic racism that still exists because of the residual effects of slavery. We can't let the swell of support just simply disappear until the summer rolls around again. We have to make sure that Congress follows through with their commitment to honor the lives of those who came before us. Our goal with her petition, which currently has over 1.5 million signatures, and we're aiming for three million, and her walk is to show Congress and the President that she is not alone in her and the Philadelphia Juneteenth Family's desire to see national recognition of a day to celebrate freedom for all. Will you sign and support this petition to let them know as well? I want to thank you for your consideration and this opportunity to address you today. Victory 400. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Albert Dandridge, commenting on 210183.
Good morning. My name is Albert S. Dandridge III, and I'm here to comment on Resolution 210083 on Bernard W. Smalley, Sr. Bernie Smalley and I grew up in West Philly, directly across the alleyway from each other. His bedroom window faced my bedroom window. We would yell at each other through the windows. We would meet at the back fence, at the corner store, at the G bus across the street, bus stop across the street from his house, at the fifteen trolley stop down the street from his house. We had each other's backs on the streets. He was a better talker. I was a better fighter. After years of sharing each other's joys and sorrows, our roles became unchangeable. Last fall, we lost our Board of City Trust President, friend, and my former law partner, Ronnie Donatucci. I remember at Ronnie's funeral, the priest giving the eulogy said that if Ronnie was not in heaven, there is no heaven. With due respect and with the same assurance as the priest, I do not believe that God would have taken Ronnie away from us at the board without a plan. The plan is Bernie Smalley. I do not believe that there is anyone living who cares more about the children, the administrators, the teachers, and the staff at Gerard College than Bernie Smalley. I do not believe there is anyone living who cares more about the miracles to take place and the doctors, nurses, and administrators and staff at Will's Eye Hospital than Bernie. I do not believe that there's anyone living who cares more about the charitable entities that help the citizens of Philadelphia than Bernie Smalley. I believe that God has a plan for my friend of more than sixty-five years and the new president. Thanks be to God.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Yasmeen Abbott, commenting on Councilman Thomas's Resolution on Black-Owned and Led Schools.
Hi. Good morning. Good morning. I'm Councilman Thomas in House. My name is Yasmeen Abbott, and it was imperative to send my children to a Black-owned and operated school to receive their education. It wasn't a question. Black schools matter, and attending Universal Institute Charter School from 2011 to 2020 provided a strong academic rigor while having constant Black empowerment daily. Raising Black girls is already challenging in America. Having them receive education where academic excellence is exemplified was also imperative. Having them see educated Black representations of themselves daily helps shape their confidence in who they are for nine years of their lives, going to school from kindergarten to eighth grade. It also helped increase their social and emotional wellness, having a safe place to be educated about Black unapologetically. They strive for a higher education, attending HPCU's, and the importance of being strong, productive Black citizens in society, making a difference every day. Having the choice to choose that educational platform for my Black girls helped me raise them without stress, worry, and fears that I already face as a Black mother in America. Thank you all again for this opportunity, and a huge thank you to Universal Institute Charter School staff and school leaders. Their dedication to their students and their scholars is absolutely unmet.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Daniel Weidman.
Good morning. My name is Daniel Weidman, a proud parent of a West Oak Lane Charter School, Black-owned and Black-led and Black-run. Thank you, Councilman Thomas, and his colleagues for the support and leadership of calling for this critical, important hearing. I chose to send my child to a Black-founded, Black-led charter school because they put the kids first. They don't look at what the neighborhood is or where they come from. They don't look at how much money we make. They show kids the love and support no matter where they come from. Every day, they put the kids first. For the last three years, I have been a proud parent of West Oak Lane Charter School. The reason why? Because my kid comes first in every decision I make, from the hurt, the pain and suffering that our kids go through on a daily basis. It is great to know that we have charter schools like West Oak Lane in the community that is willing to take forth and give little love and care to our kids. I chose this school. If that choice is taken from me, it's not only going to hurt me, my child, but the neighborhood as well. Please, council, take forth the effort that Councilman Thomas has put forth in front of you to support the Black charter schools in the community. Black schools matter. Our kids matter. Their lives matter to us. Please, I ask that today that you believe in our kids the same way we do. They are doing a great job at the Black-led, Black-run charter schools. Please do not let that voice get taken away from us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Diane Clayton.
Good morning. My name is Diane Clayton, and I am speaking on behalf of the African-American Charter School Coalition. I am also a grandparent of a scholar at the Global Leadership Academy, which is a Black-founded and led public charter school located in west and southwest Philadelphia. I am here today to thank Councilman Isaiah Thomas and his colleagues, who cosponsored his resolution for their bold leadership in calling for a public hearing to examine the racial bias and discrimination that exist within the school district of Philadelphia's process of oversight, evaluation, and expansion opportunities for Black-founded and led public charter schools. In addition to being a strong academic school, Global Leadership Academy celebrates my child's heritage, educates scholars about Black history, and gives scholars the opportunity to visit the historic places that served as safe havens for our ancestors to find their way to freedom. Here we are in 2021, still fighting for our freedom and fighting for equity when it comes to public education. West and southwest Philadelphia has very limited options when it comes to high-quality public schools. Not every neighborhood in our city has a central, a masterman, or a girl's high, not to mention, these are special-admission schools that require certain criteria to be admitted. We look forward to the opportunity to share our stories and challenges when it comes to maintaining our right as parents and guardians to attend a school of our choice and exposing the double standards and inequitable process the district has implemented when it comes to evaluation of Black-founded and led schools. Our children are public school students, and the Black schools matter and must be evaluated by a fair and equitable process. Doing anything less is not only discriminatory, but it also further hurts children and families like mine. We know doing what is right doesn't always mean that it is popular, but to remain silent on this very critical issue is to be complicit while our civil rights are being violated, and that is not okay. Thank you again for your leadership, Councilman Thomas, and your willingness to address this very critical issue.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Letitia Swans.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm calling. Good morning, hello. I am calling a representation of West Philadelphia Achievement Charter School. For the past ten years, three of my sons, Benny, Nigel, and Dylan Swans, have all attended this school. This school has been a big success for them. It has helped my children go into college. One of my sons is now attending college. One of my sons is now going over to William Penn Charter School. He's just been accepted with almost a full scholarship. This school has meant a lot to me as a mother of four boys. It has really increased the culture of the community of Black Lives Matter movement. It has really showed my boys what it is to be a man and to have male mentors, black men lead my children, give my children direct assistance, give my children direct leadership, open-door policies. The kids, the school, the teachers know my children directly. They know them individually. They have cared for my children throughout their educational experiences here. It has been the best thing I've ever did for my children, putting them in this school. It has also helped continue the legacy of their grandfather, Benny Jewel Swans, Jr., who was a Philadelphia legend, game war hero. One of the things I want to kind of leave with before I leave this phone conversation and representation of how great this school has been for my children and my family is that every child deserves a champion, an adult who will never give up on them, who understands the power of connection and assists that they become the best that they can be. And this school has been that and more. Thank you very much for having this school and the West Philadelphia community, for all black lives and the whole entire environment that the school has touched, and the children and the people and the faces of the black community and the children. Thank you so much and have a great day.
Thank you, Ms. Swans. Just say your name for the record.
Letitia Brown Swans.
Thank you. Appreciate your testimony.
The next speaker is Nicole Brown.
I want to. Hello?
Yes, just state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony, please.
Good morning. My name is Nicole Brown, and thank you all for having me. I want to thank Councilman Thomas and City Council for this initiative and bringing light to this vital topic. When I think of black-founded and led schools, it is very reminiscent of the establishment of historically black colleges and universities. They are both meant to serve the needs of African-American populations in which they have excelled beyond measure. It is still the same today where our children are denied access to opportunities and additional resources. For this reason, I celebrate and support black-led schools such as Universal Institute Charter School for their overwhelming drive to ensure that our children have what they need. They provide successful images of what it means to be black and successful. They provide successful images that black people can excel despite any disparities. Black-led schools are vital to our children's success because they foster a positive sense of community, culture, and high academic standards. Black students do well when they feel supported and can identify with their educators. They have the rest of their life to be a minority, so it is very important that they be a majority in a highly achieving black school. And I celebrate UICS because my daughter, she was accepted to all of her high schools that she chose, and she was able to maintain a four-point-O GPA since kindergarten at this school. And I have two black sons, and they are supportive and they are valued, and I wouldn't have my children at any other school, and that is why it is important to have schools such as UICS and other black-led schools. And again, thank you. My name is Nicole Brown.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
Diane Corvin Levy.
He is not on the line.
Saqib Bati.
Yes, hello.
Good morning.
Good morning.
State your name for the record. Proceed with your testimony, please.
Good morning, Council President Clark and members of the City Council. My name is Saqib Bati, and I'm the co-executive director of the Action Center and Race in the Economy, or ACRE. Thank you to Councilmember Kendra Brooks for inviting me here to speak and for her leadership on the Council Law Street Resolution. That's ultimately about winning more money to invest in public services and stopping Wall Street from profiting from our communities. I strongly support this resolution. Across the country, Wall Street needs one hundred and sixty-one billion dollars in interest payments from municipal debt. Here in Philadelphia, every year, the city spends more than two hundred and forty-five million dollars a year in interest payments from Wall Street investors, and the school district spends one hundred and forty-five million dollars a year. The way we currently finance our governments does not make any sense. Even though municipal borrowers have a default rate of less than zero point two percent, we're forced to pay a dollar in interest for every dollar that we borrow. Furthermore, cities with higher concentrations of people of color like Philadelphia are forced to pay even more. Banks already make money by discriminating against us, foreclosing on us, nickeling and diming us with fees, investing in private prisons to lock us up, financing fossil-fuel infrastructure that's polluting our communities, and selling us predatory products. They shouldn't be able to profit from redlining our state and local governments, too. Already, Philadelphia has been leading the country in work to create a public bank so that we can keep money, keep our money here locally. There's more to be done to ensure that we can invest public services like schools, healthcare, transit, and more. There is no reason for.
Help me here.
Oh, yeah.
So, where was that?
He...
Thank you. Thank you very much. And we had a slight technical glitch, but we are live on live. I want to thank you very much for your patience. So, Mr. Decker, I'm going to ask you to start over by reading Resolution Number 210-183.
A resolution congratulating Bernard W. Smalling for being named President of the Board of Directors of City Trusts, making him the first black president in the board's 151-year history.
And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, before I call for the adoption of the resolution, I just wanted to note for the record that in 1990, when I was in high school, I had the opportunity to intern with my mother mentor, Councilwoman Marion Tasco, and my other mother mentor, Councilwoman Augusta Clark. And I was telling someone the other day, it was only because they let me be around that I had an opportunity to meet some of the really historic game changers in the city of Philadelphia from all walks of life, but particularly in the African-American community. And when I think about some of the legal beagles, you know, I think about the late, great Charles Bowser. I think about the late, great Oprah Canotl. And of course, our very own Bernard Smalley. Bernie Smalley is he is affectionately called by all of us. Now, I do have to note for the record that when we had our technical difficulties, you know, our whip from the mighty, mighty Fourth Councilmatic District representing West Philadelphia, you know, reminded us that, you know, Charles Bowser and Bernard Smalley hail from West Philadelphia. All credit and humble respect given, Whip Jones, and Oprah Canotl hail from our Mount Airy. But it is with this spirit in mind that we just wanted to take an opportunity to congratulate you, Bernie, to tell you that we appreciate all that you have contributed to the Philadelphia community over the years. And that it's because people like you, Charles Bowser and Oprah Canotl, sought to share some of your legal prowess and success in trying to motivate, inspire, encourage young people, and to close the gap between the haves and the have-nots, that we are a much better city for it. And to Jackie Smalley, Jackie, thank you for sharing, Bernie, with us all. And it's with that spirit in mind, Mr. President, that I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second. Thank you. Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilman Green. Shall I say the new, one of the newest members of the Board of City Trusts?
Yes, in conjunction with my colleague, Councilmember Mark Squiller is also part of the Board of City Trusts and West Philadelphia's proud, both Councilmembers Gilmore Richardson and Councilman Jones, who always says "West is best," I like the second Councilmember Parker's resolution.
Thank you. It's been moved and enthusiastically moved, seconded. Does the resolution be adopted? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
And that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 210-184.
A resolution remembering Henrietta Lacks and honoring her contribution to modern medicine, including the development of COVID-19 vaccines.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to request a leave to do council business, but I want it to be recorded aye on all bills and resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I do believe we have an amendment also coming up on the calendar today. Just want to be recorded aye on amendment.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman, thank you. Let the record reflect that Councilwoman's leave of absence. She has left her vote and aye on all bills, resolutions, and amendments. Thanks, Councilwoman. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 210-185.
A resolution commending and recognizing Michael Hand on the occasion of his retirement from his outstanding career with the Eastern Atlantic State Regional Council of Carpenters and his service to the Philadelphia community.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, Mr. President, before I move for the adoption of this resolution, I formally wanted to take this opportunity to congratulate Mike Hand, who is a 35-year member of the United Brotherhood of Carpenters and Joiners of America. I met Mike Hand formally, Mr. President, in my role here in city council as a legislator. So, it was sort of legislator just interacting with a member of labor. I would argue to you, Mr. President, and our colleagues in the public that out of that grew a friendship when Mike Hand began to talk about what life was like growing up in the city of Philadelphia in a fish town, the working-class fish town community that he was reared in. And for those of you who really know Philadelphia, Mike would call it flatiron. And you know what that means. And so, he would call it flatiron. And I said, wow, we talked about mansion, Mr. President, in 31st New York, 11th in Indiana, topside, West O'Blain, 19th in Sheltonham. But we also had tough conversations about the history in some of those communities and who was allowed to go where, you know, and do and do what. And then we talked about the beauty in those neighborhoods and the sense of community and that residents and neighbors took care of each other and of the power of little leagues and all of those athletic associations and how folks were just neighborly. It's with that spirit in mind that I want to say to you, Mike Hand, thank you for your contributions to our city. Now that you will be formally retired from your carpenter duties, I want you to know that I will continue to rely on you for our grassroots community activism and organizing, Mr. President. What people don't see behind the scenes is that when we councilmembers get calls from constituents to do things like put a ramp up for someone who is physically disabled, but they don't have the money to do it themselves, to go fix something, you know, in someone's house, and they don't have homeowner's insurance, and you need it done. Every time we've called on you, Mike Hand, you've always responded in the affirmative. I don't care if it was Vernon Road, O'Gant Avenue, you've been there. And we will continue to rely on you to help us solve many of the challenges facing our communities. And thank you for being authentic while doing it and everything you did. No one saw most of it on social media because you would simply give the word to get the work done, and the next thing people would know, the work would be fixed. So, thank you for being authentic. And with that, Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second. Okay, and we should call for the question, but...
Council President?
Our guys, Councilmen.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I'd like, I'd like to add a little bit what Council, our Majority Leader, Councilmember Park, had just stated on Michael Hand's contributions to Philadelphia. Michael Hand's character as an individual. I've known Mike for 25, almost 30 years. I guess that is starting to show my age. So, he has been nothing but a contributor, a fighter, and a defender for people in this city, emerging contractors, making sure that the carpenters' union are reflective of the city of Philadelphia in every aspect at every level, giving people the opportunities, giving people the chance to have a career, giving people the chance by leadership in giving back to the communities as Councilmember Parker was talking about, whether it's veterans, whether it's people of low income, people who suffered a tragic situation with rebuilding parts at their house and accommodating for handicap-accessible ramps and accommodations in their homes so they can live and remain in their place of domicile in the city of Philadelphia. Yes, he is. We're an alum at the same high school. He's from Fish Town. They call it now, Port Fishington in some location would drive him crazy because we are a city of neighborhoods, and Fish Town is Fish Town. And that's how he is. And he doesn't forget his roots in the city of Philadelphia. But he has represented people for his entire career. So, I want to thank him for doing so, wish him the best of luck and continued success as a former employee of the carpenters, but as a person of the city of Philadelphia who constantly give back. And I want to thank Councilmember Parker for allowing me to share in his honor here with this resolution. So, Michael Hand, congratulations, and thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Councilman. So, it's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Please call, read the title of Resolution Number 210-186.
A resolution recognizing and supporting the accomplishments of women and girls throughout history on the occasion of Women's History Month.
The chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 210-187.
A resolution recognizing the Women's March on Philadelphia during Women's History Month 2021 and the organizers who hosted four consecutive marches from 2017 through 2020.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I offer the motion, I wanted to again thank you and all of my colleagues who co-sponsored this resolution, recognizing the tireless efforts of the women who organized the Women's March here in Philadelphia for four years from 2017 through 2020. And I just wanted to call them and mention them by name. I think it's important to speak their names and all the work they have done over the last few years on the march. So, Nikki Bagby, Beth Finn, Amy Martin, Deja Lynn Alvarez, Laura, Ally Arter, Selena Susswell, Sarita Lewis, Bridget Gill, and Vicki Landers. On behalf of my colleagues and I, we say thank you for your tireless efforts. And with that, Council President, we move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 210-188.
A resolution also naming the 2200 block of North Southford as Geo Elmeyer's Way in honor of George Linwood Myers III to commemorate his legacy and longtime dedication to various Philadelphia organizations and as an advocate of vulnerable populations.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilman Jones for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption. Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded. That the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 210-189.
A resolution recognizing Michelle Shelley Cameron on the occasion of her appointment as Chair of the U.S. Policy Council for Airports Council International.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson for a motion.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 210-190.
A resolution urging the U.S. Congress to pass Senate Bill 475 and House Resolution 1320, which designate Juneteenth as a national holiday.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson for a motion. Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilman Johnson, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
And that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, Resolution Number 210-192.
A resolution calling on the Federal Reserve Bank of the United States to offer long-term loans with terms of up to 30 years to meet the borrowing needs of state and local governments and government units in the United States without charging any interest or fees, and urging the City Treasurer's Office to enter into conversations with the financial institutions underwriting the city's bonds to negotiate long-term loans with terms of up to 30 years to meet the city's borrowing needs without charging any interest or fees.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman...
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I move for the adoption of the resolution. Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted. In spite of the banking conspiracy to alter the resolution. Thank you, Councilwoman. Clerk, please read the title of Resolution Number 210-194.
A resolution honoring the athletes of the class of 2020 for their incomplete seasons and shortened high school athletic career due to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
I'm sorry, Mr. President. Were you still on 210-194?
Frozen.
Okay.
Is that 194 or 196? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. No, no problem, Councilman Squiller. Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? The eyes have it, and the resolution is adopted. The clerk will please read... Yes.
I just, I had a little...
Chair recognizes Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam. We had a little technical difficulty. I just want to thank you for the introduction of the resolution. Thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 210-196?
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 538 Dudley, 639 Cantrell, 2842 through 44, and 2846 Tulip Street located in the First Councilmatic District.
Chair, thanks to clerk. The chair recognizes Councilman Squiller for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? The eyes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 210-200?
A resolution recognizing March 8, 2021, as International Women's Day to raise awareness of the adverse oppression and inequities that women have experienced and continue to experience globally and to celebrate the achievements of women around the world and campaign for positive change.
The chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? The eyes have it, and the resolution is adopted, and our president is no longer frozen.
You on mute?
Oh, come off mute, Mr. Press.
Yeah, thank you, Councilwoman. That's what I get for talking about conspiracy. I will never say that again. Councilwoman, where did you leave me? Where did I leave off? Where did you leave?
I left you, I left you, Mr. President, on bill number 200618.
618, okay. Man, boy, these guys are good. Keep my mouth shut from now on. Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, leader. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill Number 200618.
An ordinance amending Chapter 94200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Donation Bins" to modify the locations at which donation bins shall be permitted.
Thank you. This bill hadn't been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gauthier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye. I'll mute it for a minute.
Councilwoman Gaiman is voting aye. Councilman Heenan? Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carolina Sanchez is voting aye. Councilman Squiller?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye. The ayes are 16, and ayes are zero. Majority of all members.
Council President, Council President Clark, this is Councilman Heenan.
You're here.
I'd like to be recorded as aye. I apologize for the delay.
No problem, sir. Thank you. Eyes are 17, and ayes are zero, and majority of all members having voted in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill Number 210-122.
An ordinance amending Section 94116 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Public Health Emergency Leave" to establish leave time for public health emergencies and modify existing provisions concerning the paid sick leave and make technical changes.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom, I believe, had a question on the amendment.
Thank you, Council President. I do have three questions for the sponsor, Councilmember Brooks, about the amendments and this bill for clarity of the record. So, I'll just go through each question one at a time. So, can you explain why you included and then removed the language that allows employers who are eligible for federal tax reimbursements when provided the emergency leave that's called for in this legislation? I think it's important for the public to understand your position on this point and the impact it has on employers if federal tax reimbursements expire before the emergency order is lifted.
Thank you, Councilmember. Council President, I would like to address the amendments that I sent around today and the clarification that I sent around this morning at the beginning of council sessions. And hopefully, they'll answer Councilmember Dom's questions. And if not, I will proceed to answer his questions following that.
Can I give you the other two questions? So, you have them all together?
Sure.
The other question I had was the rationale for the 160-hour threshold for paid time off, PTO. Uh, the other question I had was the rationale for the hundred and sixty-hour threshold for paid time off PTO. So I've heard various iterations of a hundred and twenty, a hundred and sixty, and a hundred and eighty days that were floated. So I'm just wondering what the conversations were among the various groups you spoke to, what the advantages or disadvantages are with the various number of hours. It seems that other than having an impact on the very large corporations here in Philadelphia, which are fewer than we'd like, this might hurt some growth industry businesses who can't afford this right now, like businesses that are close to the margin with like five hundred and one employees. Can you walk through the thought process on this and the cost for some of these types of growing businesses? And the last question was, I want to make sure I understand correctly that the city is subject to the requirements of this bill, and I wanted to get a confirmation on that. That, that would be it. Thanks.
Okay, so I'll stop it with the tax credits. Um, just as our previous version of the public health emergency leave, if a business with fewer than five hundred employees provides leave for the reasons listed in our bill, they will qualify for a tax credit from the federal government. Our legislation was intentionally aligned with the federal reasons for leave so that businesses can take advantage of the federal tax credits. We have not elected to include explicit language, um, referencing the tax credit in this bill because there's a chance, albeit small, that tax credits may expire before the Commonwealth's emergency declaration is lifted, which would leave workers unprotected and potentially causing us to have to introduce a third public health emergency leave bill. And we already left workers unprotected for January and February, and now most of Mar- March, and we can't do that again. In terms of the rationale for the hundred and sixty hours, um, the hundred and sixty-hour threshold, um, we cannot require essential workers to use all of their vacation time for the year. So we, um, negotiated with several stakeholders, um, a re- a reasonable number, and a hundred and sixty is the number that we came with finally. Everyone may not agree with this, but we were in negotiations with multiple stakeholders. Um... And what else? Will the city fall under this less- legislation? Yes. The city, like all employers with more than fifty employees, will have to comply with the requirements of this bill, and we've been in discussion with administration about that. Does that answer all your questions?
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you.
With that.
Council President?
Yes, Chair recognizes Councilwoman.
Thank you, but I wanted to also note for the record, based on Councilmember Dom's question, that I thought that the generous employer, uh, exemption that was presented before, um, you know, dealt with the issue with the city. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear for the record.
Yes.
Okay.
The generous employer, um, aligned with what was expected for the paid ta- time off for the city. City's employees are included.
Got it. Okay. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilmember Brooks.
No problem.
Councilman Dom, you good? Okay.
Point of information.
Yeah, yes. Who, I'm sorry.
Councilman Green, point of information.
Councilman Green.
Yeah, I just want to get some perspective, um, and make sure I clearly understand, um, your response to, um, Councilmember Dom. So you're saying that by taking out the, uh, am- the amendment that you put in for small business supports, that does not create a conflict with the legislation at the federal level? Uh, my understanding is that, uh, I mean, maybe, let me step back. What was the reasoning of putting in the small business supports initially in the First Amendment that you circulated?
The first set of amendments that were sent out, we sent it out prematurely, and we had not finalized that that was going to be amendment. That's why we sent the second version, as well as the explanation along this morning. We were in consideration of it, but the fact that we were already left hanging by creating a sunset on the initial paid, um, public health emergency leave, uh, bill, and we did not want to have to go through a third round of creating this public health emergency leave, so we decided to leave it out.
But wouldn't there be a, a, so there's not a conflict between the federal law and what's proposed under this law, under the time period that the tax credits are available? But I believe under the federal law, it talks about, um, ten days as opposed to eighty hours. I just want to make sure that both employees as well as employers have clarity in reference to what applies.
Well, it talks about a two, a two, two work weeks, which could be either classified as ten days or eighty hours. One work week of hours. So we classified it together, so I'm not really understanding.
Well, uh, could I understand?
I did double check. When I saw the ten week, I mean, I'm sorry, the ten days, it kind of threw me off as well. But then the realization that the language talks about ten weeks, I'm sorry, ten days and eighty hours, all equivalent to a two-week work week. Um, so they would still be included. It's only up to a work week. I mean, the, the work session, which is eighty hours or ten days.
So the, so the American Rescue Plan, um, language says eighty hours or ten days.
Uh, I'm, let me take, I need to. I think.
Just trying to make sure that both employees and employers have proper guidance. My concern is making sure that, um, the language that's in the American Rescue Plan, we're mirroring that here at the local level so that if I am an employer or employee, I know I'm basing it on ten days or eighty hours, because that could possibly be different. And I just want to make sure that you're saying that under the American Rescue Plan, it's saying one or the other.
No, and so there shouldn't be a conflict between this bill and the federal legislation. It says up to two weeks or eighty hours. Um, and we got that information, around the information, and we sent links to the IRS classification, which provides two weeks or add eighty hours language as well. And, um, it's also listed in the language that was in the email sent early.
Right, but I guess my, my question is, why can't we just use the exact same language from the American Rescue Plan? Uh, so that way there's no confusion for employees or employers in reference to, do I receive eighty hours and or ten days? And if I'm employer, I can get tax credit for that exact same amount. I mean, we're just, just for the ease of simplicity, considering that we're dealing with a lot of information, a lot of changes. I'm still just trying to digest all the information in American Rescue Plan. Each day I'm learning more information. I just think for an ease of getting information out for employers and employees, um, we use a similar language, um, that's in American Rescue Plan. Also, I'm not sure if there's any regulation that needs to be adopted to implement, um, this proposed legislation. Because there was regulations that were needed in last year's bill that expired. That's why this legislation is important to protect both employees and also employers.
So from my understanding, the language is the same. We just don't have an explicit reference to the tax credit, um, for the reason that I stated earlier, and that is the only difference. And I believe, um, that I, I don't underst- I don't, I'm not really sure what else to say about that. The language is the same. I just did not include, um, the piece of reference directly to the tax credit, but it is the same, and it has been verified with, uh, legal.
Okay, I just, because it seemed like when I read the bill and then I read the amendment, it seemed like the amendment is just further clarifying that, um, those who are eligible for reimbursement through the federal tax credits are eligible for that, um, which kind of goes in context with your seven A, uh, in reference to requiring, um, to extend the federal state laws, require employers to provide paid or paid leave or paid sick leave related to COVID nineteen, they can substitute under federal or state law for its obligations, um, in reference to, um, and what coincides the relevant federal state laws. So I just was, I, because I thought the amendment was from a clarity perspective to make sure that people understood both employees and employers that you can receive federal tax credits. So I've been just trying, I'm still just trying to make sure that we're keeping the same language which is in the American Rescue Plan here at the local level, um, so that way ev- everything's consistent and there's not a lot of confusion a- and concern. And so you're, I just want to make sure I understand. You're saying that the language is, is exactly the same on the American Rescue Plan.
Yes, the link, um, the language is the same, and the links to the tra- to tax credit means that we would, the leave could expire, and that has happened once, and we don't want it to happen again. That is the reason I did not and do not want to explicitly link the federal legislation. Um, but the language is the same, and anyone who provides public health emergency leave and qualifies for tax, tax credits will receive the tax credit. It's the same language.
Okay, so if it's the same language, why didn't we just stick with the original amendment? Because the original amendment provides additional clarity about federal tax credits that in seven A does not. So if it's the same language, I think that's, I, I, my assumption of the purpose of the amendment that you, you circulated yesterday was to make sure that the language is mirroring the federal law, to make sure that both employees and employers understood what they're able to receive under this, um, public health emergency leave due to COVID nineteen.
The reason we didn't, we didn't do it is because the tax credits will expire. Now, in terms of understanding the language, I'm certain that most employers have folks that can help them understand this language very clearly. My concern was to make sure that working folks have access to paid sick emergency leave at a hundred and sixty hours and that it happens as soon as possible, because people were left out for three months. Left out in the cold because of legislation that was requested for us to put a sunset on this as of December thirty-first. Now, we have Philadelphians in the peak of the pandemic that were out of paid sick legislation that we have left hanging. So I will not link the federal legislation to this because I do not want to go through a third round of public health emergency leave if this were to expire. We are on the uptick, vaccination is available, and we need to protect our citizens.
No, I, I clearly support, and that's why I, uh, voted for this to get out of committee because the legislation that was, that you introduced last year expired, and we need to make sure that employees, um, are covered during the pandemic, which is still going on. I was just trying to get clarity in reference to the tax credit issue, um, because I saw the amendment, and then I saw the new amendment, and I was just trying to get some perspective on, because it's clear that there was a reason why you put it in, and I thought it was for the clarity of making sure that the American, uh, Rescue Plan coincided with this legislation to make sure employees and employers knew, um, all the perspectives. That's why I asked the question, trying to get that understanding.
Well, I, I hope I answered your question clearly. Um... Have I?
I mean, I, I, I mean, I, I got a better perspective from you in reference to the amendment. Um, I will look at this again. I think you did say there was some additional, an email that you provided that had some reference to, um, the American Rescue Plan. I get a chance to click onto that link, um, because I was just looking at, um, both amendments. So, thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
And is that it? Before I, uh, call for the Councilwoman for, uh, motion on her amendment, uh, I just want to, for the record, um, on two zero zero six one eight, um, count, I don't believe, the Councilman O, was he recorded in that? Hold on.
Yes, Mr. President. I have him, uh, as voting aye.
So it was, okay, so it was seventeen. Okay, just want to make sure I got a, got a note sent to me about Councilman O. Okay, um, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks for an amendment, a motion on amendment.
Good note, I hope.
Absolutely. Always with me, Councilman.
Thank you, Council President. With, with that, I would like to offer an amendment to the bill number two one zero one two two. A copy of amendment has been circulated to all members of council, and I move for adoption of the amendment.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, all those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and bill number two one zero one two two has been amended. Uh, bill number two one zero one two two has amended will be placed on the final passage calendar for our next session of council. Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolution?
A resolution authorizing the Committee on Housing, Neighborhood Development, and the Homeless to hold hearings examining the race gap in home appraisals and its impact on homeownership and wealth accumulation in Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution. Second.
Moved and properly second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, the ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
A resolution authorizing the Committee on Education to hold hearings to identify and examine potential systemic biases and oversight that create inequalities between black and white-led schools resulting in fewer resources or support for black-founded and-led institutions, introduced by Councilman Thomas.
Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Been moved and properly second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes are good. Ayes are good. Resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That completes our calendar for today. Um, prior to recognizing members of her speeches, I will note for the record, at this time, we will use the chat feature available in Microsoft's team to allow members to signify that they wish to be recognized in order to comply with the Sunshine Act, and the chat feature must only be used for this particular purpose. Um, that said, are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks.
Thank you, Councilmember, I mean, Council President. Um, I want to thank every member of council for voting to pass the resolution I introduced last week calling on the Federal Reserve to offer zero interest low, long-term loans to municipalities. Currently, Philadelphia pays over two hundred and forty-five million dollars in rent interest fees to Wall Street banks each year, while the School District of Philadelphia pays over a hundred and forty-five million every year. As the poorest city in the country, it is unthinkable that we are hemorrhaging this amount of money, um, just to line the pockets of wealthy, um, and the money should be spent as needed on our own city services. With the recent passage of President Biden's stimulus bill, the city of Philadelphia is slated to receive one point three billion from the federal government, just enough to offset the budget deficit caused by the pandemic. This is welcome news, but we know far, we know, you know, far from enough to address the challenges the challenges our city is facing. From tight school conditions to a shortage of low-income housing to looming climate crisis, Philadelphia will require a massive influx of funds to support its most vulnerable community members and create a livable environment for future generations. The pandemic has exposed large holes in our city's social safety net and revealed the damage that decades of systemic inequality in the form of chronic underfunding and our state has caused. The cancel Wall Street campaign led by the Action Center on Race and the Economy and supported by community leaders across the country has been raised by cities like Los Angeles, and I'm proud that Philadelphia is joining the charge. So I want to thank Councilmembers Gattia, Gil, Heenan, Gilmore Richardson, and Dom for their co-sponsorship. And I look forward to continuing to fight for investments in our communities alongside you all. Thank you, Council President, and thank you to my colleagues.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you very much. Uh, speeches on behalf of the majority. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I introduce two resol- resolutions that raise awareness of two very important health issues for the month of March, nutrition and brain injury. According to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, chronic diseases such as heart disease, cancer, and diabetes are the leading causes of death and disability in the United States. In fact, six out of every ten adults has a chronic disease, and four out of every ten has multiple chronic diseases. As a result of uninformed food choices, risk factors of chronic diseases have been identified at even younger ages. Good nutrition not only reduces the risk of disease, but also improves well-being and health, promotes safe pregnancies and birth, strengthens immune systems, and lengthens lifespans. However, we also have to acknowledge that having access to nutritious food and being able to give healthy eating and physical habits are a privilege. Good nutrition is not accessible, especially to those who are low-income and living in food deserts and food swamps. those who are low-income and living in food deserts and food swamps. Organizations like PhilAbundance, the Black Women's Health Alliance, the Coalition Against Hunger, North Philly Peace Park, and Weaver's Way are all examples of leaders in Philadelphia working to increase access to fresh food and health, wellness, and nutrition education every day. I want to thank you for your work in reducing health disparities in our city and working towards promoting a healthier, more equitable Philadelphia. On another note, it is important to increase understanding of chronic brain injury. More than 210,000 children and adults in Pennsylvania are living with a disability due to, due to traumatic brain injury, which is just one example of a chronic brain injury. This year's theme for Brain Injury Awareness Month is hashtag more than my brain injury, to help educate others on what it's like to live with a brain injury and reduce stigma. The COVID-19 pandemic has presented unique challenges for students suffering from brain injuries. The coalition or the collaboration required between teachers and families is inhibited by distance learning and lack of daily structure that can cause increased dysregulation and negative behaviors, further resulting in stress on the student and the adult. Additionally, too much screen time results in eye strain, increased fatigue, and other symptoms that are amplified in persons with brain injuries. Groups like the Brain Injury Association of Pennsylvania, McGee Rehab Hospital of Jefferson Health, and Penn Medicine are dedicated to improving the quality of life of those affected by brain injuries and their families. They each have a number of support groups, education campaigns, and programs for brain injury survivors and their families. Thank you for your dedicated service to all of them and all Philadelphians and their families who are living with brain injury. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. Yesterday, we recognized, I believe, the one-year anniversary of the first COVID diagnosis in our city. It's been a rough year for all of us, particularly though our young people, whose high school and college years have really been impacted. And that's why I think it's important today that we recognize when good things happen, particularly as it impacts our younger people. Last night, really good. Yes.
Kindergartens also got snatched away from a lot of children as well, sir. Thank
you. Last night, a really good thing happened in Philadelphia. Drexel Dragon Men's Basketball Team won the Colonial Athletic League Championship Game, the eighth fifth NCAA tournament for the first time in 25 years. Congratulations President Frye, Athletic Director Zilmer, and Coach Spiker, and the team for us how teamwork and determination make the difference of our young men and women. That example of teamwork and determination is how I want to begin my remarks today. Each week since the beginning of February, it's been about five weeks now, I've taken the opportunity to address with my colleagues on council one overriding message. We cannot fight this pandemic if we do not come together around a massive plan. I didn't want to skip the rhetoric and give you the numbers and let the numbers speak for themselves. On February 22nd, the CDC allocated a total of 63,690 first and second doses combined. On March 1st, the CDC upped its allocation to a total of 68,640 first and second doses combined. On March 8th, the CDC once again upped its allocation to a total of 70,980 first and second doses combined. Three days ago, the Health Department informed us that during the week of February 22nd, the city administered 51,300 first and second doses. They told us that the following week, week of March 2nd, we administered over 90,000 doses, which included the femicide allocation of 42,000 doses that week. So the city basically dosed 50,000 people. Given that the city has received over 200,000 doses from the CDC over the past three weeks, and has only had the capacity to deliver 150,000 of these doses, according to the city's accounts, we are sitting on today 50,000 doses that have not been distributed to Philadelphians. 50,000. And unless we act now, these numbers are only going to get worse. Follow along with me for a moment so we understand the impact. If we need to vaccinate, let's just say, 1.2 million Philadelphians, and 2/3 of these vaccinations require two doses of either the Pfizer or Moderna dose, we will need to administer 1.6 million doses of Pfizer or Moderna vaccines and 400,000 of the Johnson &amp; Johnson doses, which is one shot, for a total of 2 million doses. Two million. According to the Health Department website, the city has administered 435,000 doses to date. Yet, according to the city as of two weeks ago, 42% of our first doses went to non-residents. The total number of fully vaccinated, two-dosed Philadelphians at present is somewhere around 100,000. But that, our goal, our objective here, has to be to administer approximately 1.8 million more doses by the end of May, which is the timeline President Biden laid out for distribution. Earlier this week, the Health Department told us we don't have the capacity to dramatically scale up our vaccination efforts, limited by the number of providers we currently have. In addition to the providers in place now, the Health Department is ramping up six sites, which can do 400 to 500 shots per day. But these sites are only open one day a week, so they collectively only add 3,000 doses to our distribution totals per week. The Inquirer today reports that the Health Department has approved 60 more sites. But if we can only keep six sites open one day a week, how are these sites going to get us to where we need to be? Our inability to develop a plan that we have requested that is scalable, this meat vaccine supply chains will only delay our ability to save lives and to get Philadelphians back to where they want to be, and frankly, after this long year, where they deserve it. According to my calculations, if we vaccinate at our current pace, we'd be at herd immunity in maybe seven months, depending on how long FEMA sticks around for. That's not the worst. Look at what we're being allocated and what we're able to distribute. In about three weeks, we'll have to reserve all our doses for those who need a second dose. That was the convention center. As of March 23rd, no more first doses there. They're going to switch to second doses. This means that we won't have capacity to administer more first-round doses to people just as more contagious mutant strains are entering our city. I think it's important that we talk about the numbers as they relate to our equity goals for distribution. We were told at FEMA site at the convention center, a neighborhood site that is 67% white, was selected to achieve racial equity. Yet, an analysis of the city's registry, which is the only way to get an appointment at the site, shows that less than 20%, less than 20% of the registry live in the 15 most underserved communities of color in the city. When we put our biggest vaccination site in a white neighborhood and use an invitation list that is overwhelmingly white, it seems we're set up to fail on equity. When we first announced the Philly Special Plan, I and others said this is the best plan for scaling up our vaccination capacity and achieving racial equity. Today, I say that this is not just the best plan, it may only be the only plan we have to get the job done at this point. Our role here is to ensure the administration meets our expectations and the public's expectations on the delivery of this vaccination. In the last week, we discovered a lot of details about what we're doing, and it's not looking great. Now we have to fix it, and I hope all of you will stand with me to encourage the mayor to open up Lincoln Financial Field and other large-scale sites with a plan, we need a plan to deliver 1.8 million doses before the end of May, because as of now, we are on the wrong track, and we are heading in the wrong direction. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I know, last week, we adopted a resolution to acknowledge and memorialize those who had lost so much due to this pandemic. In today's council session, we've heard a number of our colleagues talking about COVID-19. In fact, the World Health Organization, March 11th, one year ago today, identified COVID-19 or the novel coronavirus as a global pandemic. And as I reflect on last year, I was actually attending a National League of Cities Conference in DC, and that was actually the last conference I attended. And that's when we were just really starting to get a sense of this pandemic and the impact it was starting to have, but then we had no idea the impact it would have throughout the entire globe. And so, as we moved into 2021, things are definitely looking up. But I think we get so caught up in all the issues of the day and all the news, sometimes we don't really reflect on the impact of a piece of legislation. Yesterday, in DC, the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 was passed, and I know various papers and other outlets have covered some of the information in this plan. People are familiar with the $1,400 checks for individuals, but this plan is revolutionary in a lot of ways. We have not seen this type of impact at the local level, at state level, and at the federal level in decades. This plan is going to expand child tax credit by $300 a month, provide about $1.8 million in dollars for SNAP benefits. It's going to provide, you know, significant amount of money for our school districts. School District of Philadelphia is looking to receive over $1 billion. It increases health insurance and extends unemployment benefits due to the pandemic and has opportunity for pension assistance, as well as helping those that have been entrepreneurs, that have, you know, racial, ethnic background, that have experienced systemic discrimination, with aid through a $15 billion in economic injury disaster loans, expands the paycheck protection program, providing additional eligibility and additional funding for that program for restaurants, food and beverage establishments. We're looking at $28.6 billion, $25 billion specifically in one area, about $1.25 billion for shuttered venues. Then just locally, here in the city of Philadelphia, our Transportation Authority, which has been decimated by this pandemic, expected to receive about $615 million. Airport, $115 million. And here, locally, as a city, we anticipate receiving over $1 billion. The half will be able to receive within two months, and then the other half will be able to draw down next year. So, when we think about the American Rescue Plan, not only is it providing billions of dollars for states and 19,000 municipalities around the country are going to benefit, just like here in Philadelphia, a lot of money in reference to trying to make sure the vaccination effort gets done in jurisdictions around the country, but it's also going to really impact poverty. Council President, in your statement the other day, you talked about how this is going to drastically, drastically reduce child poverty for a city that has a 25% poverty rate. The impact of the American Rescue Plan is not only a way we come back out of this pandemic, but it's also how we truly address poverty. To me, this is the closest thing we've had to the war on poverty from President Johnson. It's going to have ripple effects throughout this nation in many ways, and I just wanted to bring some of those things to our attention because we get so busy with all the different issues that we're trying to deal with, that sometimes when we have real positive legislation that's really going to make an impact in citizens in the city of Philadelphia, we don't spend sometimes, I think, enough time to really talk about that. So in the coming days and weeks and months, we'll be getting more details of the specific details of the American Rescue Plan and how it's going to impact citizens in our city, who've really been struggling for so long. And to me, what this really does is demonstrates why voting matters. You know, we went through a campaign last year, and, you know, some people will say, well, why should I participate? Why should I vote? This is an example of why voting matters. The fact that we've been able to change an administration and bring a president that was able to get the American Rescue Plan passed, in addition, by having voters in another state like Georgia elect two state senators. That's how that impacts us here in the city of Philadelphia. So I hope that as we continue to move forward and get more information regarding the American Rescue Plan, people will make that connection, that tie of why voting is important here in the city of Philadelphia, not just in one election, but every election, and how this is a really, as that time Vice President Biden said, BFD, this is really a BFD for the city of Philadelphia. So thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Council. What does that stand for? No, never mind, never mind, never mind, never mind.
I, I can't say that.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gaultier.
Thank you, Council President, and good afternoon, everyone. As several members have noted, yesterday, the American Rescue Plan was passed by the U.S. House of Representatives. The legislation will go to President Biden's desk for a final signature tomorrow. This is the most significant national stimulus effort since the New Deal. It can't be overstated how important this is and what a transformational impact it will have on towns and cities across the country, including Philadelphia. In addition to another round of direct payments for many Americans, an extension of unemployment benefits, and billions of dollars for vaccine distribution, schools, transit agencies, and housing assistance, the plan will provide flexible funding to states and cities that can be used to support a wide range of initiatives. So today, I want to encourage our city and state leaders to meaningfully direct some of these funds towards gun violence prevention and intervention initiatives. We cannot pass up this opportunity to combat our city's gun violence crisis. It could not be more dire. More Americans died from gun violence in 2020 than in any other year on record. Here in Philadelphia, we nearly reached a record-high number of homicides last year, and so far, we're on track to exceed it in 2021. And what's especially disturbing is that juvenile homicide rates are skyrocketing. The number of minors who have lost their lives is up 200% from this time last year. And a large portion of this loss is taking place in my district. Mbaba Mingastaba, a 15-year-old resident of West Philly, died last week after being shot in the head. This past Tuesday night, another 15-year-old, Antonio Walker Jr., was fatally shot, and a 16-year-old who had been shot in October died as a result of his injuries on Tuesday night as well. The loss of these children is tragic and traumatic, not just for their family and friends, but for our entire community. Experts are attributing this disturbing spike in violence to the pandemic. And similar to the pandemic, we need to treat gun, the gun violence crisis like the public health crisis that it is. This means implementing evidence-based programs that focus on prevention, intervention, and victim services. Because also like COVID, gun violence is contagious. Research suggests that even just witnessing a shooting can increase the probability that a young person will be involved in violence within the next two years. We are seeing the light at the end of the tunnel when it comes to COVID, but our communities experiencing increased rates of gun violence remain under siege day in and day out. The way a government spends is a reflection of its values. I hope that we use this infusion of funds as an opportunity to reflect the fact that eradicating gun violence is a public safety priority, a public health priority, and a racial justice priority, all wrapped up in one. I look forward to working with my council colleagues and with the Kenny administration to see what we can do to move resources towards this issue immediately, now that help is on the way. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I just have a quick two issues that I want to address, and I want to start by thanking both Councilmembers Green and Councilmember Gaultier for their comments regarding President Biden's historic game-changing $1.9 trillion game-changing $1.9 trillion American Rescue, Rescue Plan, uh, COVID-19 stimulus bill. Uh, Mr. President, I want to note for the record that Councilwoman Gaultier, Councilmember Gaultier, she hit the nail on the head when she talked about the flexible funding available for cities and states that is included in this package. It is important for Philadelphians to know because they are thinking about CARES and the other, um, 2020-related stimulus dollars that had been distributed, um, you know, from Washington DC. But what Philadelphians should know is that when we had to close a $750 million budget gap last year, and people couldn't understand why certain cuts were made when we received funding from the states, I'm not sure that people understood the help that came from, uh, Washington didn't give Philadelphia to flexibility to use that money, um, to, uh, replace revenue that we lost as a result of COVID. Uh, it's with that spirit and intent in mind, uh, Mr. President, that I want to say a huge thank you, uh, you know, on your behalf and all members of this body, to President Biden, the Biden-Harris administration, um, you know, all members um, of the Philadelphia, uh, delegation and our U.S. Senator, um, Casey for his support, um, of this, uh, uh, bill. And to also say that we look forward to, under your leadership, Mr. Uh, President, engaging with our mayor, um, Jim Kenny, along with our, uh, Philadelphia congressional delegation, uh, Boyle Evans and Mary Gay Scanlon, along with our state legislative leaders, um, that is Vincent Hughes and Williams, um, along with, uh, Leader, uh, McClinton, Whip Harris, and all members of the Philadelphia delegation in both chambers in Harrisburg to make sure that we have a robust intergovernmental discussion and strategy for how we will employ the use of these dollars as we move forward. Um, I also, Mr. President, need to say thank you to you and Mayor Kenny because, you know, I, I, sometimes I think it's only a story if people think that we are at each other's throats. But I thank you, Mr. President, and Mayor Kenny for working together to come up with the strategy to move Philadelphia's budget process, the budget address, which would trigger the budget hearings for moving them further down the line, giving us an opportunity for this federal legislation, um, to be passed so that some of the, you know, terrible decisions that we would have, uh, had to be considering, um, um, you know, with the potential $450 million, um, you know, budget hold that we had, we can now start from a, a true space. So I want to say thank you, and I'm looking forward to working with, um, all of our colleagues in an intergovernmental, um, uh, way to address this issue. Uh, now for the good stuff, Mr. President. Uh, last night, I had the great opportunity of Zooming with, and I want to make sure I get this right, the Philadelphia chapter of the Coalition of Labor Union Women here as they honored some, uh, Philadelphia, uh, trailblazers. They honored a lady by the name of Diana Montague, uh, who was the first African-American woman to join the Philadelphia Ironworkers Union 405. Um, it's a coincidence that she gave our prayer today because they also honored Archbishop Mary Floyd, uh, Floyd Palmer, um, the first president, woman president of the Philadelphia Council of Clergy. They honored a lady I didn't, uh, I didn't know of, Mr. President, but they did a video on her. Her name, um, is the late, great Anne Feeney. She was a wonderful folk singer, a folk singer and a, a political activist, and the first woman president of the Pittsburgh, um, Musicians, uh, Union. And she, uh, also honored a lady we all know well and we love, Carl Stoops, um, the first African-American woman elected as the National Conference Public Employees Retirement System Secretary. And Carl and I, aside from her purple hair that I love, we connected because she was committed to pensions, um, you know, and retirement, uh, security. Um, it's with that being said that I want to thank you, CLU, um, for acknowledging the efforts of those women who have been breaking through glass ceilings and knocking down bolted doors, um, to say to generations to come that they can too have an opportunity to succeed and sit at tables where they are not currently represented. So to Corinne Parker, who is the president of, uh, uh, CLU, Councilmember Jones, she is not a resident of the fourth, she lives in the ninth councilmatic district, just so you know. Um, to all of the officers, trustees, executive board members of CLU. Uh, to, uh, Thelma Clements and Selena Hodges, thank you, uh, uh, for your leadership. Um, I also, uh, have to, for the record, uh, note that Michelle Slay, Shashana Bricklin, Vanessa Fields, Nina Ahmad, Hal and Sue Rosenthal, um, they were present with us, and I was also proud to join with, um, my sorority judge, Tamika Lane, um, my coalition sister, um, Kateria McCabe, um, uh, Judge and member of Alpha, Kappa Alpha Sorority Lori Dumas, and Judge Maria McGlocklin, they were all present for this event, and, um, it was just nice to see women from all walks of life, Mr. President, uh, come together to lift each other up, um, under the spirit, uh, and umbrella of solidarity. Uh, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to shout out and thank my colleagues, starting with, uh, Member Thomas for his passionate, um, defense of, um, institutions of color today. That, that moved me, uh, and it showed his commitment, um, not only to the education process, but how committed he is as a parent to making sure that his children and all children get what they deserve by way of cultural competence. So I want to say that. I want to say thank you to Member Green, who, um, put it succinctly as to how important the passage of that legislation was. Somebody asked me, um, in a, in a discussion, some of us, you know, government junkie geeks tend to get together and talk about budgets. And they asked me, how bad is the upcoming budget? And before yesterday, the only thing I could say is, real bad. And real bad meant that there were scenarios of 10 and 20% cuts by department and what that would have meant to service delivery for the people that we represent. I want to shout out your leadership, um, uh, President, because you can have any old captain of a ship during good weather and sunshine and, you know, everybody's, uh, floating down the Delaware. But when the storms come, you need a captain of a ship that understands some of the, as you always say, the adult decisions, tough decisions we are paid to make and were prepared to make. So that rescue wagon that came from our Philadelphia delegation, the Congress, the Senate, and the White House meant more than people actually know. And we were, we, we were on our way to a very bad place. I want to, um, thank, uh, Member Gaultier for citing that in these good times not to forget the systemic problems of, of gun violence. So now I raise one other area of focus. Um, the school district is going to be one of the biggest beneficiaries of these dollars manner from heaven or manner from Washington, right? Our children who have been at home being educated, some in difficult circumstances, um, have suffered. Um, I think we're looking at some of the highest absentee ra- rates among students ever. We're going to see a lot of poor grades as a result of those absentee rates. It is imperative over the summer that all of the support systems, whether it's credit recovery at the high school level or tutoring to play catch-up at the grade school level, be employed this summer. If we can afford it, we should do it. In addition, we should take this time over the summer to prepare our aging facilities to be able to accept our young people and teachers with modernized ventilation systems. We should not waste this crisis to do what needs to be done, not just for today, but for, uh, years to come. So as you said, you know, we were afraid in our discussions, uh, budgetarily, that this was going to be a one-time appropriation and that we had one year as a municipality to recover, to get people back in restaurants, people in hotels, people back in business offices. But the way this is happening, it will give us more like a two-year recovery period, for which, as one member of council, I am grateful. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmen. We are all grateful, yes, much needed. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. Um, you know, I was, you know, sitting here, I'm kind of reflecting on my comments, I wasn't even prepared to, uh, make comments today as I was just taking this day in. Um, but yesterday was a pretty rough day. The last couple of days have been pretty rough. Uh, but just echoing the sentiments of my colleague, uh, Councilwoman Jamie Gaultier, uh, like, we are really in a state of a crisis right now. Like, we are really losing too many young people, um, to census gun violence. Uh, when I think about the work that we are doing, last week, we introduced legislation to create a resource network around violence, resources for young people and families so they don't have to address this issue of census gun violence alone without resources. I think about the Office of Victim Advocates, which is going to open up, um, during this spring to help families who have lost loved ones to gun violence. I think about Captain Gilmore Richardson, who had penned a letter to the administration to make sure that during, during this upcoming budget session, that every department has a plan around how they're addressing gun violence, if we're giving them resources. I think about Councilwoman Jamie Gaultier, who said that we need to be in a state of emergency declared right now here in the city of Philadelphia, uh, which is, we all know, long overdue. But I think about my constituents. When I'm out and about in the streets and, and I looked at the mother talking about how she lost her son, this was really a good kid. And it just reinforces how critically important it is that, um, to those that have lost loved ones to gun violence, like, those families deserve justice. Like, we got this whole concept inside our neighborhoods that, you know, when, when these acts of violence happen, um, a lot of time is quiet. But I, I just implore to the constituents that I represent, those who are listening, that if they see something, say something, right? Because that mother, that father, um, who are losing, um, their loved ones to gun violence, that's a hole in their hearts that's never going to be replaced. And so there's a level of urgency in addressing this issue, but most importantly, what we don't always talk about around this issue, justice needs to be, um, served to, to those family members who have lost loved ones, um, the gun violence. So I look forward to continuing to work with my colleagues to figure out, um, how do we get to the bottom of this issue? We're definitely going in the wrong direction. Uh, we're in the middle of a pandemic, and so we're fighting two different issues at one time, but it kept me up late last night, um, as it has done plenty different nights. Um, because at some point in time, it's like, you know, we represent the people and we're doing the best that we can. But around this particular issue, uh, we're not winning right now. And, and too many young people are dying, um, to census gun violence, and so, you know, I employ the other leaders, law enforcement agencies, to aggressively stay on top of this issue. Like, we're doing a city council, wrap our heads around how we get to the bottom of it, because we all know, uh, when it get hot outside during this upcoming summer, right? We see an uptick, um, in gun violence. There's no reason why that level of urgency, actually, it should have started last year, but we're not really preparing even more aggressively now, um, before this summer, um, comes. And so, um, I'll keep everybody posted as I continue to work with my colleagues around this issue, but we got to get to the bottom of it, because if not, um, nothing else matters, um, at all. And if, if, and if anybody think I'm wrong about that, just go ask your constituents how they're feeling right now about the state of Philadelphia around this issue, and, uh, it's totally just unacceptable. So I just wanted to put that on the record, um, and, and I'll continue to work with my colleagues with some concrete ways on how we address it, that the community as a whole, we got to all step up and make sure that, uh, we call for justice around a variety of different issues. Let's not call for justice for these young people being murdered in the streets of Philadelphia. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Yes, it's time to take it to the another level. Thank you. Um, that appears to be all the speeches on behalf of the minority and the majority. So that being the case, Chair recognizes, uh, anybody else? Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, March 18th, 2021 at 10:00 AM.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded after council stand adjourned until Thursday, March 18th, 2021, 10:00 AM. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 It was opposed, I've had it, motion carries. Thank you all very much, and be safe.
Mr. Mr. President.
Absolutely.
Um, I, I know, I know I that I failed in my comments, uh, to note for the record that as Councilmember Green was going through all of the specific, um, uh, areas that will be funded, um, in the city of Philadelphia, uh, via the Rescue Act, that, um, our Philadelphia City Council technical team, when we find out what those dollars actually mean for the city of Philadelphia, because I think that's the question a lot of residents, you know, are asking, $1.9 trillion, but what does it mean for our region, except in the school district? So our GISer Greg Kingery, sorry to call him out, Mr. President, but they're going to be looking for a way to design it so that they can put it on Philadelphia City Council's website and all of Philadelphia will be able to access it. So I apologize, Mr. President, for failing to include that in my remarks.
It's okay, yeah, they've, um, actually been in, in consultation with the, um, city's budget department and finance chair, uh, to talk about the specifics and get, put the level of specificity out there for the people in the public and for us. And, and we will, uh, obviously have, start having our conversations about adjusting our budget to reflect of this very, very significant resource, uh, that's coming our way. Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you. Thank you all. Be safe.